It is four o'clock, and we'll call the meeting to order if you guys don't mind. I appreciate you coming. We appreciate everybody's attendance and being here with us. We do have a packed agenda for three different meetings that are going to go back to back to back. So I do want to understand that we will kind of work our way through the process as we go so that we make sure that we're staying on schedule and on time. We are going to change the order of the agenda. If you've looked at the agenda tonight, it starts off in the agenda that the tax assessor's presentation was going to go first. The reason we're going to change the order is we had originally put a Facebook post down a month or so ago when, before we realized we were going to have to change the time of the work session meeting. Then at 4:30, we were going to invite the tax praiser to come and present an explanation on tax assessment notices and how that goes. So we're going to try to keep that consistent to where his time of starting will be closer to 4:30 instead of at four o'clock so that if anybody additional does come from that previous Facebook post, it will, it'll be consistent. So we're going to take that item of the agenda that was item number one, and we're going to move it down to item number five. So we'll rotate, we'll rotate that down, and we'll just kind of work through the agenda and move it from one to five, and then work our way through the rest. So I do want to say thanks for everybody being here with us tonight and, or this afternoon. And we'll go ahead and get started. The first item that we're going to go through is going to be rezones. We've got Mr. Wes Frye come up and make a presentation of a couple of rezone requests that have been put through their, their office and through the planning commission. These are three items that will be voted on during the regular meeting that this is to give kind of an overview picture of everything in the record for, for the board to see. Where's your secretary?
Okay. As you can see, this is the first one. That is RZ 190317 with Susan C. Barker. It's 113 Townsend Road, Talking Rock. From highway business to rural residential, .92 acres, parcel 01805102. And the reason for the rezone quest, a request is for mortgage purposes. The, as you can see, the triangular piece, if you'll go back one screen, and that's in purple, is highway business and maybe the road changed. We never figured out why it was highway business, but in any case, so, and she does own some adjoining properties. So she requested to go back to rural residential or go to rural residential. And recommendation from the staff was for approval from HB 200 residential. Okay. Any questions from the board?
Was this the one when it was presented that she was wanting to combine it with the other properties to make it the?
She has one tract, a little tiny tract, but she was going to combine it to, to make it a full one acre, which there is water, so.
It's less than an acre.
Yeah. Okay. You see it going well.
Yeah, I can go back.
You can see it. The R right beside it there. Okay. And it's, I had written down .03, 023 or something like that. Okay. And the second one, that is Ms. Traylor Cable Jones, RZ 190343, 117 Cable Road, Jasper, Georgia, and it's agricultural to rural residential, 1.11 acres, parcel 065055. And the reason for the rezone was to add the adjoining property, our zone, this rural residential, the place in which she lives, to correspond with what she's receiving through part of inheritance. And you'll go to the next tract. You can see that the green over here on the right side is rural residential. That is Ms. Cable, Ms. Jones's home. That was her grandparents' home. And then you also see over there, which is a larger parcel, which is part of the family estate which is being split up. If you go to the next screen, you will see that red portion, the dotted line, that is what she is adding to her existing home place. And so it skirts as a big L on two sides. Okay? And the recommendation was for approval from rural residential to agriculture, pardon, agriculture to rural residential. They've got a quick trigger there.
Well, no, it's set to auto-advance. As soon as you click next, it just keeps jumping.
Approval from, from, add to rural residential. Any questions on this one? Okay, those are the two that we have for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. So we'll have both of those to present in our general meeting. This was just to make sure that any questions that hold record, we can go through. All right, next item is Ms. Charlene Bunch. I had asked Charlene to come because you guys are aware with fuel costs being what they are, every agency and every group and every government is dealing with trying to keep up with an accurate mileage, the rate for mileage to reimburse people that have to be reimbursed. So we were trying to take a look and compare that and I'd ask her to come and make a presentation. But, your board?
Basically, we originally had adopted the mileage rate to be based on what the state was, and at that time it was .575 back in 2015. We got a notification from the state that the mileage rate now is going to .62, which is 62 cents, basically. So we would like to get in compliance with the state as well.
And the 2015, which is on page two, shows, and it's basically your per diem for any time there's an employee that has to travel. When it was originally put in in 2015, it was put in at what that current rate was, but it never referenced that it would change along with the state's rate. And I think one of the conversations we had was to prepare for when we get a vote in our next meeting on August the 4th, to be able to prepare that that actually just follow whatever the current state rate is so that we don't have to come back before the board every time the state changes the rate. It would be able to adjust because we're all hopeful that one day gas prices will come back down. So it may not, but I know that every federal rate has changed to something, state rates changed, so they all, they all were consistent. We just want to make sure that we're consistent with what they've got going.
And that, and in your packet as well, that is on the last page as well.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions?
That makes sense, sir.
And what we'll do is go ahead and have an item prepared for when we go into our voting meeting August the 4th, so we can put that before the full board to vote on changes at that time. And it'll follow along with some of the, the presentation of this piece, but make on some of the other personnel handbook things that we were going to try to get changed as well. Any other questions? Now it's pointless for you.
For now.
For now. Thank you, Charlene. Thank you, thank you. Next item is to have Ms. Paula Peace talk about some employee handbook updates. I believe that in your, your packet with the agenda, it's got some of the recommendation. What?
I believe I'll listen in your packet and hope you've got to look at it. But back during March, during one of our department heads meeting, the subject come up about vacation carryover at the end of the year. What the county currently does is you can carry over two weeks without losing any, if you approve, having extra approved, having any year you lose that. So I was asked to look into that, and I did. And out of the responses that I got back from 14 different cities and counties, Higgins County was the low one. There was only one other city or county that just carried over. Well, none of them carried over two weeks. The next lowest one was four weeks. And from all the responses, people laid down, and I'd like for you to consider that, putting it on the meeting for the next, for August. And I'd like to recommend that we change it from two weeks to four weeks at the end of the year. As well, I added some other updates to the handbook that I think, as we go through the year, try to update at least once a year. And it's thanks to the, I kind of make notes on it. And this is some of the things that have, you know, I think maybe needed to be added, but I give me out over these. Any questions?
So I think on the vacation portion of it, the, one of the issues that we run into, and it's because as an employee is here, the first five years, they accumulate two weeks a year for vacation. Then it moves to a three weeks per year, and then all the way up and advances all the way up to some that are in their 25th year of employment, they, they have five weeks per year. The difficulty of being an employee and taking five weeks off at a time is almost impossible. So when we approach the end of the year, a lot of times we have people that are losing leave or having to take a significant amount of leave toward the end of the year because it's been busy throughout the year and they couldn't take it. So because of having, not, not being able to roll over leave from year to year, we'll either have people that, that are, are trying to scramble and take off the month of December or hunting season. And this might help them to encourage us to be here a little bit more during the season so that we can, we can do that. But it also will help them accumulate the work they're doing along the way for something that's going on. Financially from the county, it doesn't cost us anything unless the employee leaves, then their vacation time is the time in this thing. So if we'd added additional two weeks, it could be accumulated when an employee left. Other than that, it's not a, there's not a out-of-pocket expense to, to add that as a benefit thing. I think quite a few employees have, have referenced it at some point in time over the last couple of years, that, that they would like to see the ability for that to accumulate a little more.
No.
And you can look, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
When you see the amount that others, I mean, it goes all the way up to 16 weeks. And then I think four weeks is the next plus is that out of the ones that responded, which you put this out to all the, all the counties and cities. So the others, I think, are just items for you to review and consider. That way we can kind of come up with a solid game plan on just updates to verbiage on some of the policies and a couple of missing areas that we can go through and clean up.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome.
All right. That brings us down to just the general discussion portion. I'm going to get through a couple of items on the general discussion, and then I know I've, I've got Kurt here with the road department. I wanted to update on a thing or two as well. Planning retreat, I know that we had had an email conversation going back and forth, but it does look like August the 17th was, was a date that we can kind of get on the calendar. So we'll get that information advertised from two to five in the afternoon, and Ms. Lisa will send out an invite so that we can get that on the calendar. That'd be an opportunity for, for us to collectively get together and look through and plan for expenditures coming up and any other activities we need to work on. The next item is, I don't know if Randy's here or not. I didn't see him come in. Randy had reached out and had some different quotes from pressure washers. I know that sounds like a simple thing, but when we have multiple facilities throughout the county, it can get rather costly. He was able to get a, a very, very reasonable rate that's within his budget of maintenance. And they began the process, they started with the state patrol building, then they, the DFAX building right across from us. They're going to actually pressure wash this building, the courthouse, and they did the health department as well. So they've been working through trying to get those buildings cleaned up just to really kind of get a fresh, fresh clean look. So that's been in, in process. The state patrol building, the elections office, we are, I would say we're beyond 75% now. We're probably more than the 85% complete rate of getting all that accomplished. Stacy has been working closely. I've got to thank the sheriff's office has, has provided what we originally thought was just going to be Bob Olson, who's over maintenance for the sheriff's office to do the labor, but I believe Ms. Jurgen, that's a major, has probably done as much or more labor than Bob has. So yeah, they've done, they've done a phenomenal job. Most of everything has been done with just material cost. I mean, they've done the labor to provide that. We did have to pay to have two doors cut into the back because we had to have a secondary exit for the elections office to make it accessible as a public meeting space. And then we had to provide a second exit to get into an IT room before the state patrol was still used because it was going to, the cost to move that was going to be significant. The one other thing that we've got to complete as part of our agreement with the state patrol for the renewal of the lease is to put an ADA accessible interest at the front. The only ADA accessible interest they had was on the side that we now have. So we picked up the handicap ramp and everything is 100% ADA compliant for the elections office, but it took away the ADA access to the front of the building. Going back to when they built the building, they didn't build the initial front stoop at the top of the stairs big enough to make it even remotely possible to be ADA compliant. So you're two feet short on what's there. So we had an engineer that was working with Galloway Construction and Consulting that came out and gave a quote and did the engineering work to reconfigure, which means taking out those whole front stairs and putting the brick stairs down one side and a handicap ramp down the other. We've currently only got one quote in at this time, and it's from Galloway Construction, and it's $46,000. So it was a significant expense to the amount of labor and the amount of work that's going to be done. We're going to reach out and try to get two more quotes. It doesn't affect us with trying to move forward with opening the elections office because those doors are already sealed off, but we do have to find a solution. We're going to try to see if there is the possibility of a better, more reasonable solution. The cost of concrete is, is the vast increase of what that, that rate is. But I wanted to bring that before you, that that's the one quote we have is, is high. It is still within the range because of the labor being done by the, the sheriff's office helping us so much with doing it, that within the range of what we had originally set the budget for the overall project, I think we're still going to remain in range with being okay. But if we can find a way to do that in a less expensive way, we want to. And I'll update you on, on anything that changes with that as we go forward. But goal is still targeting August. Do we have a specific day in August?
We hope to at least partially be operating by August 22nd out of the new office.
Our electrician, our entire electrician's company had the wonderful luxury of COVID, so that has delayed just a little bit on moving to the next stage. So they've had to, they've had to sit out for a week. Fortunately, nobody's been severe, but they've, they've kind of had to delay load for a few days. So that will be one thing. Take Depot, phase one has been completed. This was something that the previous board had met during last year's planning session to allocate the funds. It was divided up into a three-phase process. Phase one was to complete the side of the building to receive and accept the donated train set that Mr. Bill Gibson's been willing to prepare. That phase has been completed. The renovations were, were done, and it's, it's incredible how, how great of a job that Valerie Bates did with, with overseeing that entire project. They're in the process now of delivering and getting that equipment there. That's one of the items that we'll have on our agenda during the meeting is the official, since they're now able to bring the train set in, the official receipt of that. Phase two is to put restrooms there to, to keep the historical building without tearing it all to pieces. We're not going to actually plumb the inside of the building. There's going to be a, restrooms that are going to be outside. Mr. Gibson's been gracious to say he would be willing to purchase a old train car and actually have that set up, and so then we can renovate that and create the restrooms out of that. So she is in the process right now of trying to coordinate and engineer how that's going to be delivered and how it's going to be set up. We've already got the septic permit. Everything's moving forward with phase two to get those restrooms in. And then phase three is to complete the space on the other half of the building that we as a board will have to determine exactly what is going to go in there. There's been debate as to a resale shop and leasing it. The ultimate goal we, in our last planning retreat, was to make sure whatever we do in that space helps to benefit the train set so that it's actually used, that it's not just sitting there, that the kids groups and others and tourists that want to come through to, to see the demonstration will have the opportunity to come in and see it. There's a, a lot of historical posters that Kennesaw State University has been creating and signs to put throughout there. So it's going to be a benefit there. Mr. Suttles, who came in a minute ago, has been working to identify all the different train, model of train shops throughout the state of Georgia, so we've kind of got a list of those. We do have a, a local individual that was interested in trying to rent it for another type of resale space. So this is a decision now that our, our board has changed, changed around, that we need to make sure that we sit down and discuss those terms and how we're going to do that. So we'll, we'll move forward with it. I just wanted to give an update where we are, and we're still within actual underbudgets at this point. So I don't have the exact numbers right here in front of me, but we are operating under the budget that is set for it. Next item on the agenda, and he's standing in the back of the room. I probably should have done this first. I want to introduce our new chief county marshal, Mike Carswell. Mike was, was hired as the director of public safety, working with Slone Elrod, and brought, brought Mike in. Mike came, we stole him from the sheriff's office. I warned our department heads the other day that if a deputy pulls him over, that they, they get the ticket, it's my fault, and I really can't get him out of there. Mike has been working with the sheriff's office for, for the last year or so, and then he was there several years ago prior. I've had the opportunity to know him for many years. Mike also served for, for quite a few years as the chief of police for Holly Springs Police Department, has a master's degree in public administration, just an extensive, his training is, is everything is, is very well. I think he's going to really do an incredible job. He did start this week, actually, so it's his first week on the job, and from what I understand, he's already had some very interesting cases done his way.
Oh, yeah.
To, to really help him write his memoirs as he goes. But I wanted to introduce Mike and welcome him to the team, and I think he's, everybody here is looking forward to working closely, closely with him. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Gee, that's all the items that I had. I know I've got Kurt Anderson with Public Works and Road Department. I wanted to ask him to give a couple of updates on a couple of roads going on.
Right quick, a little update on Cove Road. They're now saying it's going to be the first week of August before they start to do the patching on Cove Road and Grandview Milling and repaving of Grandview is going to fall soon thereafter. We're adamant about all of that being done, you know, by, by September. The other thing we've got on the agenda right now, we had a request from one of the school bus drivers on the intersection of Damascus and Black Knott Church Road. As she comes up the hill and turns, there's limited sight distance in one direction, and the bus, it takes a long time for it to get out in the road there. And she requested us to put a four-way stop there, and I believe it's a legitimate complaint, and I really don't see where it would be a problem. I just wanted to make y'all aware, that's what we've got in mind and, you know, open it to any discussion or any, you know, any problems y'all might have with it is let us know. But if there are no problems, we're probably looking at doing that here in the next week or two. But that's all I've got.
Thank you. I went with Kurt earlier. The crew's been working on top of my road, prepping it and getting it ready to do tar trucks himself, and they've been working, they've had to shift the lane around and kind of work around the curve, and it's, it's phenomenal to, to see what they've been able to do. They're, they're trying to get it finalized and get it prepped so they can get the, the tar truck up and start the actual process of putting the, the top coat on there. And then once that's here, several of these others that I'm sure I've seen, we've both gotten some of the emails on a few of these different roads, that, that they're going to start working through the process of trying to patch what you can. It's a limited, a limited manpower and, and financial resource that, that when it comes to paving is difficult to, to get them all, but we'll get all the game, I guess. Okay. Any other department heads have updates that you want to present before we, we're going to turn the floor over here in just a minute? I wanted to make sure if anybody had anything else that you have a chance to get it in. Okay. If y'all don't want to be adventurous, then we'll move on to the next item. We're going to switch around a little bit. I know that some of the staff from, from OYS Office is going to come up and set up their laptops so that they can take over and present, but the tax assessor's office is going to come or the tax praiser, the chief tax praiser is going to come and kind of do a presentation on assessment notices and, and everything else that's going on there. We felt like it would be really good to provide a, a bit more information to everybody, so we wanted to invite you to, to take over the floor. I will go ahead and make a statement, and I did say it at the very beginning about our schedule. We do have a hard five o'clock meeting that we have to have in here that's a public eve meeting required by law that we've got to have in. So if we get into Q and A or we get into things that keep going, we've, I'm not, I'm not trying to be rude if I stand up at one point and tell you we've all got to get out because we've got another meeting, we've got to go, but at some point I'm going to have to say we're going to have to stop and, and move forward. So that, just a, a heads up in advance that that part will, will be going on. In time, we're just going to sit around here and see that.
Okay. All right.
Everything should automatically pop up in the employees.
Land the chair real quick. We've come a long way from Polaroid photographs in hard folders on property. Originally, we closed for an hour every day for lunch. We had telephones. Today, we're fixing to show you a presentation. We have come so far from where we started, it just absolutely blows on us. I want to thank Tyler and Claire Elliott and Grant Parker, Graham Parker, Graham Parker. They're the creative people behind doing some of the things that you're fixing to see. Most people are aware that this is our Q public website. You're going to see the people that are in the office, and I want to thank them for trying to keep up with all the changes that we're seeing in Higgins County, Georgia. They're hitting it as hard as they can, doing as much as they can, and there's more coming. But I want to thank each and everybody there because they love people, they love working with the public, and we get a lot of positive response from that. If you are used to computers, you can go to this site, and you're going to see tabs all the way down through here that are going to tell you all kinds of things that you want to know then. Go to the brochure tab. Okay. For years prior to electronic mail, websites and things like that, we've always had written, printed information in the office that people could look at to see how the process works. Okay? We can stick it on there, that's one of the tabs. Anytime you want to know something, you should be able to find it somewhere on that page. Go down to the bottom ACCD video. Okay. Down at the bottom of this page is a video from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. If anybody really wants to understand how this whole process works in the state of Georgia with local governments and what they're doing, and places where local government can do better than maybe individuals can, that's one of the best videos you'll ever see. We're not going to show that video because it's 11 minutes long. Okay? But we're going to go forward to our new video, what we've noticed around the state of Georgia with the change in the markets everywhere, especially in Georgia the last few years. A lot of places are making videos that are more custom tailored to their counties. So with these people's help and support from everybody, we have done a new video that's only about five minutes long. Hit it, Tyler.
Here's a unique sense of freedom that comes with owning your own property. Whether you enjoy growing your own garden, placing your own trails, or suddenly getting a hiding lawn, there are few sites more enjoyable than ours when you own your land. But being a responsible property or in case dedication, it means investing your time and resources to make your home the best it can be. Some are usually busy stuff, whether it's clearing weeds, trimming edges, or just facing up the house, there's always something to be done. Some are also the time to receive your tax assessment. It's a simple document that provides basic information about your property value and estimate of the taxes below at the end of the year. These taxes are your investment in the community or well-funded schools, strong public services contributing to the value of your home. If you're in Edinburg County or did own your own property, you may have some questions about this information and about what resources are available to you. In this video, we're going to break down the sound of your tax assessment, how to access public property data and other information online, and how Edinburg County is making the most of your tax dollars. Speaking of, let's take a look at what information is on these assessments itself. First thing to recognize is that this is not a bill. You are only receiving this for information purposes. On the top right of the page, you'll see the date of the notice, as well as the last date of filing appeal. Section A of this assessment explains that your final ad for your tax bill will be based on the appraised and assessed values of your property, as well as your rights to appeal this assessment. If you disagree with your property's assessed value, contact the tax assessment office located Suite 121 of the County Administration Building, and a member of staff will be glad to explain by your assessment number three. If you still disagree with your property's assessment, you have the right to file a written appeal to the county board of assessors within 45 days of your assessment notice. Section B of your assessment lists your tax district and tax account number and reflects your property size and improvement information as January 1st of this year. You can view the same information, including photos of structures, sketches of buildings, and aerial photography by visiting qpublic.net/ga/Edinburg. The site provides public information for all parcels within the county. The property information updated regularly and aerial photography updated yearly. You can even use Q Public to search sales records, the detailed folders that identify properties with specific zones in certain neighborhoods. Plus, if you go on the contact tab of the homepage, you'll find a directory of all employees in the area of your office. Similarly, you can find the restat numbers to assist you. Section B of your assessment also shows your property's Section B of your assessment also shows your property's appraised and assessed values as well as the reason you received the notice. In the state of Georgia, property taxes follow the simple principle that your property will be assessed at 40% of the fair market values. How we are sampling here, this parcel has a fair market value of $729,040. $729,040 multiplied by 0.4 is a 40% assessed value of $291,616. This is the value that will be used to determine the estimated tax payment. This brings us to the last portion of the assessment. Section C, this section displays a breakdown of your property's essentials and estimated tax bill based on the mileage set by the tax authorities within the county. In Picking's County, there are two primary tax authorities, the board of commissioners and the board of education. However, if you live in the limits of an incorporated city such as Jasper, their mileage will be sway yours well. Mileage rates are percentages of what is owed to each authority with one mill representing $1 per $1,000 of assessed property value. These mileage rates are put forward to supplement the maintenance and operations cost of each tax authority and are determined independently of one another. They're decided by each authority's budgetary needs divided by the total value of all taxable property within the county. These mileage rates are not determined until after the assessment period. So you see displayed are the previous year's mileage rates. It's no secret that Picking's County has been growing like never before in the last few years. In fact, according to the latest census, our county's population has increased by nearly 13%. But despite of all the new development we've experienced, tax rates have not decreased in the last. On the contrary, mileage rates have actually been decreasing over the last five years and are projected to continue this downward trend. With surely counties' mileage rates ever increase, Georgia law requires that public hearings must be held to address the public's concerns. All we hope is to provide a helpful summary for understanding your assessment. If you have anything you may have additional questions about the finer points of property taxes. You can learn more about them by visiting Picking's County's website, pickingscounty.gov and visiting the tax assessment's webpage. From there, you can view detailed articles that explain everything you need to know about property taxes, including how they're calculated, extension information, and the appeals process. It also provides contact information for the office. We always count on three staff members to answer the phones and provide personal service in case you decide to stop by. If you would like to reach out to our office, call us at 706-253-8700. We're stopped by Suite 121 at the county administration building.
Okay, Tyler, go to the mileage rate slide now. That's a real good overall explanation of the forms, how they work, how everything is done. One of the things that we're real proud of in this area, maybe one of the reasons people keep coming here, is our local governing authorities, whether it's the county or the school board. Most people don't realize it because our whole reality is everything is costing more money. Everything's going up more than we've ever seen. When they publish their five-year histories, most people don't pay attention, but we do. You see those five-year histories and mileage rates. Collectively, our county level has gone down over 2.14 miles in the last five years. There are very few communities you're going to see that in. So I'm very proud of governing authorities. I've got Mr. Young representing the school system here today. Want to educate the public that that's the other end of the process after the assessment. Notices are done and before tax bills are calculated. So attaboy for all y'all. Keep it up. Now, the estimate of your taxes is based on the previous year's mileage rate because that's what the legislature said to do, that estimate. When the bills come out, more than likely they'll be a little bit blessed if the mileage rates are reduced. So I want everybody to know that. That group of people that you saw that work in our office, we're hooked to all kinds of websites. Tax commissioner's sitting there and he's got his own website about tax bills. You go to his website, it's for 2021 because 2022 hasn't happened yet. When you're talking to us about assessment notices, we're looking at real time 2022. And at the same time, we're working real hard on 2023 with all the new changes in ownership, different properties being produced and everything. So it gets to be real exotic when you're talking to everybody explaining what year you're dealing with. So I always remember that. Let's see, what else did I want to touch on there? Oh. The other thing that you heard Graham talk about, and by the way, that was Graham's voice on that thing. He's really, really good. We appreciate him. What does that say? The man, the man. In the video, Graham tells you how we're doing annual photography. And that's true. You just haven't seen it yet this year. We've got a lot of upgrades going in this year, not just the new aerial photography. Look at my fingers. Hopefully we're fixing to see our new LiDAR product online and that's going to be phenomenal. Haven't seen it yet, but it's supposed to be coming. And the last word I got was in the next couple of weeks. So when y'all look on there and you see that, that's quite an accomplishment. Stephanie, is there anything I have left out?
I think so.
That pretty much it, did it? Okay. Well, thank y'all for your time and want to let you know how excited we are to be able to put this type of information out for everybody that is buying, selling property, looking up whatever they need to do. Staff is doing a good job keeping up with it. Thank y'all. That's it.
Thank you, I appreciate you. So I know we've got several people here. I don't know if there are any questions specifically. Like I said before, we do have a cutoff that we're going to have to switch to another meeting. But if there's any comments or questions that we need to fill, this will be the time. Do you have anything else that you want to go?
Very good presentation.
Yeah, Graham, we've been very fortunate to have an employee who kind of kept hidden in offices. It's phenomenal voiceover work and video work. We really didn't want the public to know that so that we can kind of keep it to ourselves. But he is, he is phenomenal.
It's an excellent video, by the way.
We're really excited about it.
All right, well, with that, we will adjourn the work session. And I want to say thanks again to everybody for being here. We do have at five o'clock is a public hearing. The public hearing is the update to our comprehensive plan. It's something that's required every five years that we do an update to that. So it's not just Picking's County, but Jasper Nelson and Talker Rock will also be updating their portions of the comprehensive plan. This is the first initial kickoff. So we'll have Ethan Calvin with Northwest Georgia Regional Commission will be here to speak at the five o'clock meeting. And that way we can get through and get that officially kicked off. And then we will start to form the meeting schedule and all of our partners that we'll be bringing in to help us work through getting any updates and things we put in there. And then we'll follow that with our 5:30 board meeting. So if you feel like meeting your life away, this is the place to do it. Thank you again for being here and we'll see you at five o'clock.